All right, it's now six oh three P M and I would like to call the Special Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three to order. Commissioner Korea, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? And before I call a roll call, I would like to introduce our newest member to the planning commission. You write a our commissioner, you write a, and I just wanted to know or see if you have any words.
I am, I'm just very excited. You'll have to, I I have to apologize, I've not done this before, so push it.
Oh, no, you're already.
Okay, um, I'm just very happy to join the group and to be able to contribute to San Juan Batista, having lived here. A few years now, I'm very interested in what I can do to contribute.
Great, all right, well, thank you and welcome again on behalf of all commissioners. And then clerk, can I please get a roll call?
Commissioner Korea.
Here.
Commissioner DeBries.
Here.
Commissioner Maderos.
Here.
Commissioner Pisano.
Here.
And Chair Aranda.
Here.
All right, and then I would like to open up to public comments. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair may further limit the time for public comments depending on the agenda schedule. If you wish to make a comment, please fill out a speaker card. And if you're attending via Zoom, join the Zoom webinar and use the raise hand or if joining by phone, press star nine on your telephone keypad icon. Clerk, is there anyone on Zoom?
Chair, my apologies, since this is a special meeting and a workshop, we'll take questions after the presentation and after commissioner comments.
Got it, all right, then I guess we'll close out public comment for now. Um, all right, next on the agendas or discussion. The four oh four, four oh eight San Juan Hollister Road, A P N zero zero two, zero five, two, zero one, two. Staff, is there a report?
Um, sure, just a very brief report, thank you, Chair Aranda. As directed, uh, the the developer and and their architects have gone back to the back to the drawing board, consulted with a few of the commissioners and got some uh, more specific detail and direction that they're excited about presenting in a workshop format. So they could go back and finish up their plans and and we could come back at a later time and close out the hearing and and get a building permit for this project and get them to work, so. That's the goal tonight is to see the feedback of that hard work that's occurred over the past few weeks. And you think you'll agree it's a different and it's a different project and so uh, you'll be, I think you're happy with the results, but we'll see, okay, thank you. With that, with that, we will ask the 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 designer to 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 introduce this project, reintroduce this project to us.
Welcome, and then just hit the button on the mic there.
I've been here a few times. Good to see you all again, and especially under the current circumstances, we've you know, we've taken a lot of time working with some of your local commissioners and some of the locals and reaching out to historians and it was, it was brought to us that 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 there was a gentleman by the name of Antoine Tax that was the original owner of that corner, or actually the second owner, because the first owner was one of the actual Donner Party survivors. So taking those those things into account and giving a good solid direction, we we looked at it and worked through it and thought, you know, if it's gonna be, if it's, if we're, if we're on a farm, let's make it a that barn look, you know, was something that is appealing to San Juan that that works for you guys. And at the same time, works for our, my client as the developers to make this thing, you know, happen, it's it's been since two thousand sixteen was the original plans and it was under a different developer. And we've been working since last February to get, and we've had some cross, some miscommunication crossing in inadequate from our point and 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 from us being not getting the the information, not giving the information that we needed, so it it was just kind of a a shamble for both the city and us, so it was, there, there was no one to blame for it other than it's just things happen, and so by coming back and looking at this, we decided to go to go with more of a barn look and it's on the actual building itself and then the canopy. We've gone with some open trust type structure that has and we spread out the columns to the end of ends of the uh, fuel islands to make the, to make it look wider. The the old one looked like it was like if a hard wind blew, it would, it would blow it over. This one won't, we don't have to worry about getting blown over, so it should work a lot better. The entire project is from this point now, you know, in working with the city, we we know what you guys are looking for and we're, we're trying to work through and get that portion moving in the right direction for the city of San Juan Batista. So.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Um, are we, Liz, are we able to like put that up? The preview of the project?
These are the photos, these are actually what they are is they're screenshots of the actual rendering. You'll notice the the wood siding on the the convenience store structure, and that's actually in not only has it changed as far as the structure, we flipped it so that the convenience store now is on the north side and the lease space is on the south side. So it and what what that did was it it opened it up so that we're able to, depending on who they lease it to, it's given them a patio area on the side that is usable for the public. Okay. Uh, one of the other things that that was kind of stressed to us was to get access from the hotel into our structures are are into our facility as well. And once, once we we show the video, you'll see that there's a if you can go to the next slide a little. If you'll notice here, there's, there's the the in point I was talking about, the columns being moved to the outside. I still need is to keep something around the bottom of them so that people can't run into them. You know, uh, so that's the reason the stone base is just to keep it so somebody can't. We don't want him hitting those columns. That could cause, it could be a little scary. Uh, and and it's kind of funny that I say that, I just had one of my clients in Fresno just had somebody thought they were pushing on the brake of their car and pushed on the gas pedal and went through the store and almost to back to the coal boxes. So it does happen, whether we want it to or not, it does happen. Uh, go to the next slide, please. You'll notice on the right hand side there behind the olive tree and and I did that, we put that olive tree there for a couple things, a couple reasons. One, we went with olive trees along that side to match the what's going on at the hotel. And number two, that olive tree will kind of give us a buffer between that that patio area and the the parking lot too, so it kind of cleans it up a little bit, it gives it a little more, so you don't just see back into there. If you can go to the next one, please. Uh, you'll notice that we've gone, we, we, we thought about a a wood shake roof, but it's just such a fire issue. The the fire marshals don't like it. Uh, and you have the other issue with the with the with the wood shake roof is that even if you get a fire treated, which are very expensive, soon as it rains on them a couple times, it washes off and they'll burn just like, they'll they'll burn like kindling. So, uh, and then we went with a a kind of a rusty look on the tin roofs on the sheds on the walkways, and then if you notice the walkways, instead of being just concrete, what we've done is gone with a Trex deck uh, in there to just to give it a little bit of of that, it's not wood, it lasts perm, it's basically permanent, but it 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 still gives you that 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 eye effect of having those lines in there.
So more like a boardwalk?
More like a boardwalk, that's correct. Yes. Okay, and the next one? Just another view, and you can see the patio there now on the right hand side. Uh, it has a little roof going out there off another little lean to and then the patio is out there. And if you'll notice just uh, above the olive trees, there's a walkway between the our store property and the hotel. So that we can get, if somebody's in there at night and they want to go in and and grab something, it's very convenient for them, so working well, there again, trying to work with what is there and 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 make it a positive thing for everybody. Uh, go to the next one a little bit, please. And there, there again, there's your patio. Roof is pretty simple, gable roof, the barn look. Next slide. And there's your patio again. And up at the very top of that picture, you'll see the uh, electric car chargers. Because everybody wants electric car chargers now. Yes, they are. Yeah, they're the.
How long does it take to charge a Tesla on one of those?
They're, they charge really quick. Uh, I I'm, I've been told like thirty minutes or something like that, you can get, you know, to, you can get quite a bit out of it.
So you can plug in and come to the restaurant and sit on the patio while your car's charging?
That's correct. So.
Or go across the street.
Or go across the street, yeah.
I I also have a question, with those Tesla chargers, I, you know, forgive me, I don't have an electric vehicle. Is it only for Teslas or does this also apply for anyone who has a different type of?
I think you can charge any kind of electric vehicle on it.
So has Tesla approved that, that they are going to be the ones to put the chargers in?
Yes, yeah, we, what what we do is we we actually get ahold of Tesla and they do all their own underground, they do all their own setup. So they take care of all of their end of what they're putting onto the site.
Perfect.
We just, I just had one in Visalia where they actually came in. It was already done, the parking lot was done and they added Tesla into it. And they had to come and move a curb to get more room because of the the ADA requirements. So it's a, it it, you know, they, and and the owner was happy because they took, they took care of all the cost. So it it works out pretty well for the owners. Okay, go to the next one. This is the the actual rear that you would see if you were coming up the freeway going west. There's the block wall back there, so you're gonna, you know, you aren't gonna see as much. But there was still, we wanted to leave room for those, and we did, those aren't actual sliding doors. They're just made to look like that.
Great.
Okay, so so that's one fifty-six?
Yes.
Ava and I were looking at that and we had it backwards, okay, okay.
So if you're coming from Hollister towards San Juan, that's gonna be safe?
So on the right hand side where the trees are, that's one fifty-six?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so because they're building the highway there, is there, is there a noise reduction?
For the store?
Well, for the store or?
No, we didn't, we didn't, you know, we didn't put in any any wall along that side, just because typically you want that to be, to be seen both directions. So, uh, you know, we, we put the wall on the on the west side of the property and the south side of the property. Go to the next one?
It looks amazing.
You got another one there a little bit, or was that the last one?
Could I ask one question about these, it looks like ventilators on the top of the roof?
Yes.
Are those necessary?
No, it was just kind of a, a barn thing with that just to give it another feature up there to take away, so it's not just a straight line.
I got you.
You know?
I personally, I don't care for them, but I do like the addition of the patio, I think that's, that makes much more efficient use of the total space, and I'm assuming if this project gets done, we'll finally get rid of the old San Juan end sign that's been at the corner of that property for the last eight hundred years.
They go to the next one? That is the, that's the, that's the side facing one fifty-six. And there again, it has a, it has a large door looking slider on that end as well.
Tony, if you don't like the items on top with a weather vane, look better since you're going for a barn look?
You can, you can, we, we could take the middle one and put a a weather vane type structure up there.
Or perhaps a coupe.
Just for aesthetic.
I happen to, I want to vote for those old barn vents, I think it makes really, makes it look really authentic and looks like Mr. Tax's sheep could be inside.
Yeah.
Because I think you see those on on old barns in the countryside, those those old barn vents.
Yeah, I agree, Dan. Yeah, I I I think aesthetically, they need to, they belong there. And I I don't know, are they functional?
Yes, they are.
I mean, we may as well use them, if we're gonna have an, you know, have an attic, you may as well use them to. Yeah, I I think it adds to the character of the building and I think it's necessary.
Good, thank you.
Hey Fred, can you explain to me that little cement pad? Uh, that's.
That's a P G N E transformer pad and unfortunately, I have no control over those guys.
Yeah, yeah, don't worry, I just want to see what that was.
They have, they, they bark, they, they march to the beat of their own drum.
God, no worries, no worries.
We just do, yeah, we just do what they tell us to do. In fact, you, we have to, once, once we get once we get approval of the building, we we will actually submit to P G N E because they're a year, a year and a half out.
Oh, geez, okay.
They're, 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 they're fun to work with. Go ahead, the next one. And then there's the, there's a close up of of the building with, and you'll notice it has the knee braces on the beams, very similar to the windmill across the street in a lot of ways. But if it's sitting diagonally, you have two buildings of very similar structure.
Looks good, I I think it's gonna complement that area really well.
Go ahead, next one. And that's front lucky straight on.
So, Mr. Chairman, I use this slide as an opportunity to say some, give some of my feedback.
Absolutely.
So I'm not a hundred percent feeling the small windows above the main entrance to the C store.
Okay.
And for some, for some reason, it makes it to me, it makes it kind of look officey, like my orthodontist could be up there.
Sure.
When I, when I had braces, did you know I had braces? Yeah. So I'm wondering, and as far as signage, are you, are you contemplating doing a painted thing like the one, because the windmill, you know, on their, on their gabled end of the the big barn, that says windmill, it's kind of like, almost looks like a a fruit label or a produce label kind of image, but it's painted right on to the the wooden siding.
And and we could go with something like the Alameda at at Tax Corner.
Oh.
And 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 those windows, I mean, that's that just saved my client money. If I get rid of them. So, yeah, that's, that's not a problem.
Would we also be able to flip the last, like, I I say you you get rid of all the windows in the middle, but the two on the right, the two on the left top, can we flip them or make them?
Do you mean like this one here?
Yes, the one to the right, yeah.
Yeah, I I totally, the 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 window under the gable end.
Make them.
Vertical.
Elongated instead of, instead of.
The, no, just to. Get rid of every window in the middle and then the two on the left, the two on the top, two on the top left, two on the top right, make them vertical. Yeah, like the one all the way to the right.
Yeah, that window above the tin shed on the.
So it doesn't look so officey.
And and while.
On the restaurant?
What we would do would be, what I would do would be center one, center the one furthest right over the two vertical ones. Or over the two down below and then center the other one on the on the single window.
Perfect.
And that also gives me room with that shed roof coming in there to make sure I get it flash, so we don't get water inside the building.
Perfect, and then if we were to get rid of all these windows, I would assume that you could put like uplighting or something coming, kind of similar to the mill where it like goes up. And then what about the top? The top peak, is there any way we can put like a, what is it, a hay, a hay mount?
Hay mow.
A hay mow, or or another small something or accent at the top of the peak?
Uh, you know what, once you get the sign up there, I don't know if I would do it on that, on that side, or if I would do it on the end facing
The highway.
Uh, facing the highway.
Yeah.
And and all that is is extending out a beam off the ridge and, you know, putting, you know, the.
A pulley.
Yeah, i- i- if we're gonna all jump in here. So I kind of agree with the window idea and but also put the the halo. Yeah, if if you could, if you could, being that you're saving all this money on the windows, if you could bring that roof out over uh, so that you can have a suspension, you can suspend, like they have a, it's a hayloft up there.
Yeah.
And you need to get the hay up there, and if you bring that roof out, just a hair, and you could actually put a dummy look.
Hoist there.
Yeah.
And you probably could put the hardware that goes with it right there or off the end of it.
And I I think.
Like a mannequin?
Instead of putting it on this, on this west elevation.
Yes, on that, good on that.
Yes, on the west side, yes.
Yes.
That'd be great. Yeah, and if you could kind of repeat what happened on the other gable that's for the the smaller unit and put that up on the gable as well on the wall side facing the Alameda. We, you're talking about the windows in front there, right? The the string of the, the long string of them.
Yeah.
You're trying to, that might be too contemporary, but that doesn't bother me because not only an older barn, but they also use them as shed.
Yes.
And sometimes as a shed, when with, when you're working with farm equipment, you need the light to get in there to be able to work on the equipment. So that's not too far removed from a farm scene as far as those windows are concerned. They're, 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 they could be as accurate as if you go back in time.
On the, on the smaller, smaller gable that we don't have enough vertical height in there to get anything like that, we can do.
Gotcha, yeah.
But we just don't, what to wear on that, on that north end, we've got a lot of space that I can get something that looks basically like a door, like you could fit somebody through.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm, you know, even though you guys came up with all these different things that I agree with, but I think we can go for, but I think on the west side, if we can show something where the roof comes out just a little bit, it might give us, it might give more interest to it. And 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 also I'm thinking about how it grabs the the people who drive by, you know.
Well, and the thing is too.
As a, as a, as a traction.
On both of those, what I can do a whiteboard, we can extend those out. I can go and and come out about, you know, off the ridge, come out about four, four or six feet each side and just extend that roof out with some outriggers looking out.
Right. And also the the island, and you got the roof on it, I really liked the idea that you got there. Um, as the open beams and what have you, and it was interesting that because we went this route, it's actually a lot safer and stronger.
Yeah.
Than than what we had up there, it was kind of bulky and heavy.
Looks like a one follow.
So I, I'm really pleased that where you're going with this.
Thank you.
That's what I did.
And already that, it complements the windmill area.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You got another, another one there?
I like it because it becomes an experience rather than just a place to go to.
This design, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Totally, it looks like a cool place to go to where you can also happen to get gas, then get something to eat.
I can't wait to actually eat there.
There's your, there's your canopy.
Yeah, once I get my test.
So that canopy idea, that's supposed to be kind of like a timber frame look, rough, rough human beams. Like old Mr. Tax went into the woods and.
It might be. It might be steel, but it would be, it would just be wrapped.
Look like, oh, wrap with wood?
Uh huh.
I see. And Fred, I'm not in love with the landscaping in front of the C store, but that's just just to show something's going there, because you're gonna still come back for landscaping plan, right?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted, we just want to show, give us some color, so it brings out everything else.
Totally, yeah, I would love to see a lot more olive trees, just something similar to what the Lial property has. I I I think it's just gorgeous at night, you know, with the uplighting and all that.
Totally.
You got another one, Liz? And there's more of a close up of it. All the, all the pumps will have gas, gas and diesel as well.
Which pump is for the planning commissioners with the special rates?
Yeah. And does it have Apple Pay?
We couldn't, we couldn't.
Is the Valero does it, it killed me.
Funny is, is my daughter gets all this stuff off of SketchUp has its own library, okay? And I told her, I said, they want a old fuel, uh, fuel dispenser, she goes, Dad, they don't have them, I can't find one. I said, well, you, well, you're gonna have to make one, she goes, I don't have time.
Are those, are those raptor tails coming out from underneath the canopy there?
All the way through.
Oh, very cool.
It looks amazing.
And if you go one more. Just a little different view. And the next one a little. That's, that's from the street, that's from the entrance where you pull in. Or exit, you can do either one. And the, the, the pump out by itself is a high speed diesel.
What does that mean, what's high speed diesel?
If, it's fast.
Oh, so that's diesel, but at a high speed?
Yeah.
That makes sense, but I I guess when, who uses high, why would you get, why would you need high speed? Because you said this, the the other pubs are gonna have diesel too, right? I'm just curious about who uses high speed.
Well, if if cars, what you're, like, you're, say your farmers come in and they have the big tanks. They can pull into that and get.
Oh, so someone getting a large quantity of diesel.
Yes, sir.
I see.
That's correct.
I think it's great, I I've heard of some residents in town that have diesel trucks and they commute to Watsonville, I think, to get.
Yeah, there's no place.
There's no place close, so I think that's amazing.
Yeah. Okay.
It'll serve a need.
Next one. There again, there's a canopy with a store behind it. And one more, I think. And then there's the, from the, that's from the exit.
Looks great.
And for all this landscaping, is the same as his question, but that will come later?
With a different landscaping plan.
Yeah, we'll have it, well, yeah, we'll have a landscape.
And a plant list and species and all that stuff.
Only Tesla? No. There, oh, there you are, that's the.
That's not changing.
Yes, that's what I thought.
They, they're gonna, the new ones, the these, any, anyone can change.
Okay, perfect, yeah, I just, I have a concern, because I I've seen other electric vehicles other than Tesla in town, so I want to make sure that everybody can actually charge their cars and not just Tesla. Oh, uh you know what, can I have you come to the podium? Sorry, so the public can hear. Thank you.
So yeah, so Tesla told us that uh the last gas station I built, year and a half back. They don't have the hardware, so others can come, but now they are changing even the older ones so that everybody can charge it.
Ah, okay.
So there's a fee involved into it.
Got it.
Like how they're making it like a business right now.
Yeah.
So they can just have their own hardware in the front like and then anybody can charge it.
Okay, perfect, yeah, because I I know we have one electric uh charging station in town and. I'm not sure if everyone can use it or whatnot, but I love this idea. I think it's gonna attract. People from the valley coming up to going on the way to Carmel, stopping here, charging, eating in town, visiting. I mean, this is great, so.
Cause there's apps, right? It's like.
Yeah, yeah, because you get it on a. You got an app for like charge point and all that, so wherever they have electric. And the high speed diesel, the good thing about it is uh because sometimes people have big RVs. And trailers part back, so it's really hard for some somebody to come into the canopy and then not looking for, so it's just like.
So there's no, there's no height.
Because in town, even uh property at the back, they have a lot of RV storage and everything, so a lot of people, you know, will be looking for that. And there is no diesel in the whole town.
No, this is great. I love the diesel thing. You guys are killing it.
Yeah. Fred, I got a question for you, and I've asked this question before of other. Developers and projects that I've worked on, is there any and and but I'm not up to date? Is there any product out there? That you can add to blacktop asphalt to make it like brown?
Uh we we typically don't do uh blacktop asphalt on our uh uh. See uh get uh gas stations, it's all concrete.
Concrete? Well, concrete, you can add pigment too.
It's it's just it it's just a lot because long term. The these guys are found, it just. Uh it just lasts because the asphalt, you have to replace it or, you know, come back and uh. Uh fill in the holes from the, you know, fuel dropping on it, the rain, the cars beating it to death. So uh most of the ones we've been doing, they've all been concrete.
Well, that's so, because what I'm thinking of is is that's, you know, you're. You just said what the limitations are with your computer program, that's a lot of blacktop and it looks kind of blacktoppy, kind of, you know, like a parking lot. But if it's gonna be concrete, I know from doing stuff around my own house, a little bit of pigment. Mixed into concrete goes a long way, so this could almost look more natural. With the earth tone type additive, pigment additive to the concrete. That might be pretty sharp, what do you think?
Yeah, oh, yeah, please come on.
Operating gas station, so what happens with the, see the fuel agencies, like who regulates all the fuel and everything? So there's a special program that you have to clean it, so you cannot just take a pressure wash and clean it. So you need to have like a. Kind of where you feel the fuel can go, so there's a special companies who clean it, so that's why you keep under the canopy, like a gray concrete. So if somebody is like fueling and they drop the fuel, so we can see it and right away they can come and they can clean it. So if we make it like a brown pigmentation or something like uh stamped concrete, I would say, then it's gonna defeat the purpose for the fueling.
But I don't think there's much of a difference between tan and gray.
Yeah.
I think tan would look a lot better, but anyway, we can. We can look into that.
The canopy, we would like to have a concrete, but the other suburbs, we would like to have asphalt. The asphalt on the other, the number one reason for that is. The concrete, you have to have a lot of maintenance, when the concrete is poured in a big, so after some time you start seeing cracks. Asphalt, you can change it after like uh four years, three year resurface it and it looks really brand new. Concrete, you cannot do it. So once, like let's say somebody is parking uh a vehicle. On the side, on the parking lot, you'll see on the gas stations, you'll see all those on the concrete, you all see all that fuel marks, so. I have done my gas stations all concrete and asphalt and concrete. I like asphalt and concrete much better because we can resurface every three, four years. Once concrete is done. It's like.
Jack camera about to get it out, but I'm confused, is this so is your project in San Juan gonna be asphalt or?
Asphalt and asphalt everywhere and then concrete under the. Color like a beige color kind of thing, and same thing we can do in front of the uh building, like a beige color and then and. Yeah, and and same thing with the parking, like like sidewalks, we can do that beige color kind of thing. I like how we do it in the houses, like the driveways and stuff like that, but rest asphalt. You know, it's much easier to. Get the out, if it's all concrete, it's like crazy.
We can go old school and just do all dirt. We'll just spray, we'll spray paint the lines on the dirt. Every Tuesday.
But then, but then uh uh. Um we would have to uh uh make sure that we comply to ADA.
ADA?
Yes.
Just that's just.
That's the, yeah, that's.
It just, that just cares about slope. Well, that's that sounds great. Yeah, we just, you know, those of us who live here remember very well when windmill redid their parking lot and everywhere like. Piece at a time and you're allowed to drive around, but it looks great now, so every once in a while they re- re-blocktop the whole thing.
Is there another one just down? That's just further from the distance. Yeah, go ahead, thanks.
Um, is this the video?
Yeah, this is the video.
Chill reality. Looks really nice.
What are on the sides of those traction closers on? Fred, is that rock or just cinder blocks or what is that?
No, it's it's a stone, it's a.
A stone veneer? Over a block wall?
You know what, I also have a question. Um I know. This is controversial in this town. Um I don't know what you call it, that yellow. Tracton, the ADA thing, can can we turn that gray?
You mean the matte?
Yeah, the matte. I think there was people in town that were like, I hate the yellow.
No, that's that's.
So I just, I don't want someone saying, why is it yellow? But anyways.
As long as the police come and get you first.
Yeah, at least I asked.
No, there's cer- certain things that it was, there's just no. No way around them.
No worries, just checking. But it looks amazing.
Thank you. Well, that's that's what I've got for you and I appreciate your time and your efforts and your assistance and. Wish we were building down, we had done this ten months ago.
No worries. It looks amazing. I think you're you're definitely headed in the right direction. Um. I I guess, you know, I kind of didn't ask yet, but um obviously I'd opened it up to commissioners for questions, but I know we've been asking questions on this presentation this whole time, but. Commissioners, is there anything else that you would like to um? Uh say about the project?
There was an email, he said, okay, if I talk about that.
Uh I'll do it in public, come on. Yeah.
I just. Add a comment, I really like the idea of doing the uh. The extension of that roof line on the over the towards the highway. And uh if you could look at some of the traditional old barns, there's not very many of them left. But I'm probably the only one in this room was old enough to have ever bucked hay into one of those little barns. And that's a really cool look. Usually it's a little triangular. Knock out there and a big beam and they used to have a set of pulleys with a buck rake on it and then big doors that opened up.
Yes.
And if you could recreate that, that would be really cool. Under that, I really like the design. I still don't like the little thingies on the. I very much like the idea of where you've been able to flip that and uh add that patio on the side. So uh oh no, I think you're on the right track and maybe we can actually get this thing built.
Yeah, the the. That triangular thing you're talking about that comes out.
Yep.
Like the nose almost on the on the roof line coming out from the ridge, windmill has that.
Really?
Yeah.
Yep.
And they got a hay mow underneath that and then big barn doors. It it's kind of interesting, they have huge barn doors on a track. And they have handles and they have a chain and a padlock on there, like like they'll open these, but I don't think you can. And then to the side of it, they have a smaller barn door also on a track, so it's very authentic looking and pretty cool. Um. Overall, let me ask um the city manager and the applicant, so what I take it it. I take it then that you're going to come back with a full landscaping plan, a lighting plan and a signage plan. Is that's gonna manage that, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, because the lighting, I think it was the video showed some pretty modern looking um fixtures along the Alameda. Whereas I think it'd be much cooler to carry the old. The old style uh light fixtures that we have on Third Street on the other side of the Alameda. They're all covered with this Christmas stuff right now, so you can't really see them that well, but they're neat, they're, you know, they look like they're from nineteen fifteen or something. So to have those along the sidewalk, maybe, anyway, we can talk about that when you when you get the lighting plan done. And then signage. Um yeah, the signage program should kind of unify. What you intend to paint up there, like the windmill's painted theirs, and then any monument sign, whatever signage you want for the whole.
Sure.
Corner, tax corner.
And we'll work with that.
Yeah, we're put down on that, that'd be, so that it's all kind of unified, you know, kind of all fits together. Um I just want to add this editorial comment that um. A lot of you know, I was involved a lot with uh the Hacienda, that whole thing. As regards this corner in particular, and one of the objectives in that. Conflict, if you will, it's not a conflict anymore. Was the fact that the use on that corner. Wasn't as um consistent or beneficial to the kind of the vibe or the vernacular, the aesthetic. That the Hacienda has as much as it could be. I see, and so the goal. Historically was to try to have these two properties relate to one another and integrate. And I see this design is accomplishing that and is being very um integrated with. The Hacienda, especially with the break in the wall and the continuation of some of the landscaping that the Hacienda has, like the olive trees and so forth, so that these. Two properties, instead of being kind of separate, relate to one another and that's so the whole, that whole area is just really. Really pretty and really cohesive and and great. Um I think that, last thing, I think that somehow, I'm not sure how we could do this done, but it'd be nice to have. The city through whatever means. Um and I know we're not there yet, because this is just a discussion, but for vision of the future to sign off on final. Colors and fixtures, materials, like I know I just got an email today. Um on kind of a materials list or this kind of roof and that kind of stuff and. Um you know, like the roof, for example, might um be the same one that windmill just put on, so that they kind of relate to each other. And um I actually took the liberty of texting Chang today to ask him, hey, you remember the type of roof you put on so that they match, you know, or. Have something to do with each other? And he said, no, Jim Gibson was in charge of that, and I know Jim pretty well, so I can I can get the manufacturer and color and stuff. Those two, so the two roofing materials look the same. But yeah, so colors, fixtures, like, you know, maybe some barn sconces on the outside, what do those look like? Um windows and doors, I think are important. Um you know, what what's your final selections on the windows and doors and just a way for the, just say, yeah, those look good, those look good, you know, because. A project like this, if you do the details really, really right and pick really great materials, it's just gonna be a blockbuster. People are just gonna, it's gonna be the place people want to stop. I think it's gonna be very, very successful, and thank you for all of your your hard work and your working with the city and so forth to. Dr. Dala and Fred and Harmon too, thank you guys.
Commissioner Pizano, any comments?
Um I'm new to the to the commission, but I wanted to say thank you because it's appears that. You really listened and incorporated all the suggestions that the city and the historians have made and um. I like that you are very open to the suggestions, so just thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate that.
And Commissioner Maderos? Comments?
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the fact that you put all on a lot of thought into what we said last time and. And incorporated into into the. Into your design and into the whole thing. I think the experience that you've created here is gonna be good for San Juan. I think people are gonna want to stop here and look and see what's going on. And find that uh this is a great place to have an experience when it comes to history and what have you, so I think you're you're spot on. I think when you come back to us and show us the finished drawings that you finalized. Uh incorporating everything that we put it, we talked about today and previously. Um um I can't thank you enough for the hard work you put into it, so thank you for that and. I'd like to see what the final drawings look like eventually.
Thank you.
All right, and then I will uh finish here. Um I can't thank you guys enough. Um I think at our previous meeting, I remember making a comment where. I just said that I wanted you guys to feel proud of this project, and I felt that our last project, the way the design looked, just wasn't something that this community would. Really like to see um for this town, just because this place is very special and unique. Um after seeing the drawings and and seeing all the work you guys put in, um this project is fabulous. I think it will really complement with how um complement. What the mill is in that area looks like. I mean, it's just gonna be a cool little corner there. It is the entrance. Um up to the canyon, so I know those people that drive by it um on the way home will love it. I know that people driving down the one fifty six to the Pinnacles, you know, that's kind of a kind of a gateway there, it's just gonna be something great. And that project will make people stop just because of the two buildings there. It's just gonna look like something that I I wanna stop at and get gas, and I wanna walk in there and go inside the store and um. Eat eat there. I mean, it just, it looks like a great place um to be. Um so I'm really excited. Um I hope that um. Our the rest of our commissioners are are excited to um move this project forward. I I'm I'm, it's just, it it looks great. And I can't wait to see a fruition.
I'd like to add just one, I I'm hoping that this will bring you notoriety. And people will want to come and see you when it comes to designing their buildings, because you're willing to listen to what people have to say and. You might have uh signed up for something that uh ma- make your business grow a lot larger.
Thank you very much.
Right, so with that being said, I am gonna um move on to public comments. Um and and open that up. So. Um yeah, we can do chambers first, so um clerk, is there anyone in chambers that would like to make a comment? Welcome. Hi.
Hi, um, great job, everybody. I love it. It's beautiful. Um on the. Where the tanks are, should the roof line and then those are all structural and stuff, I don't know any of this, but the two outer tanks. Before people filling up on the outer tanks don't have coverage, I don't know if it's that important, but like if it's raining and you're getting gas, you're getting drenched. Can that be made? Okay, so it's just the photo that, okay. And then I I haven't been to meetings, I haven't been listening, um what's inside? It's just a convenience store or is it?
It's a convenience store, and then I believe there's gonna be some type of retail, right? Or at least. Least retail or at least space, um and we're hoping to see if we can get a restaurant or someone in town. Hop us. It's a rumor.
So somewhere inside there.
Yes, and so.
Spirit of San Juan could find a kiosk spot versus business bars in town.
Sure, we can make that work.
I'll keep coming to the meeting.
Yeah, I love it. Yes.
Thank you, guys. And I, I know Fred has been working on this diligently for so many months and uh for lighting plan. I think like I personally like more uplighting, if we can uplight from the bottom to the building, so when it's somebody's coming, it's not right on the face, so it's look more like an elegant look. So, so we can do that, because in particular gas stations, we need for security, we need X amount of lights as well. Because if somebody is like, you know, crimes happen, people, you know, break the nozzle, they keep the nozzles and they walk away. You know, so we need to have cameras there. My only comment is the canopy is, looks great, but I'm gonna discuss with Fred as well. We're gonna widen it up a little bit, as she said, so that, you know, it's, it covers all the pumps. And uh it has enough lightning there, but to beautify the building, I agree with the Dan, like we're gonna put some antique kind of, you know, fixtures, which looks nice with the, that look, we are going not like a modern fittings. And then, you know, do some nice uplift, uplighting on the landscape areas and everything. So I think. But we need help with the signage plan. We're not gonna do really modern signage, but it's as a gas station, we are spending lot of money by doing the right turn lane, so I need city support to have a good signage for us. We're not gonna do anything funky. I really want to have a good thirty to fifty feet American flag with uplight. So it's a corner of, you know, uh San on the side, we can have a nice flagboard, we're gonna plan that. And a good signage, which not gonna be like huge, but which is nice, elegant and visible. And if we can name something, the Alameda on the top, something, you know, so it looks nice.
Great.
So we'll work it out, uh, uh, everything with him. And now we are building it. If you have some restaurants who wants to come or lease a space, you know, you guys are local, you know, send us our way. We have a nice patio. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers?
Good evening, Jackie Morris Lopez, resident city council member. I just wanna say thank you to Mr. Avala. You did come back and you listened to what feedback we gave you and thank you to the developers and owners for being patient. This is a beautiful project. I'm looking forward to it being built. And I think um as far as the retail and maybe eatery in there, I, I just came up with this idea, like we have a lot of restaurants in town. And I know that they're thinking about maybe bringing in a restaurant or an eatery. Why not have a section where we can benefit all the little businesses in town, like a grab and go sushi from Anaka? Grab and go sandwich from Lola, grab and go soft serve from Margot. I mean, we could highlight that and have the other thing too. But that, and then the kiosk is awesome to highlight what's downtown. I think we can all benefit and it's a great project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers?
No other um public comment in chambers, but I do have to rent um to email public comments.
Okay.
If you wanna do those or go to Zoom.
Um, we can just do those since we're already here and then we'll move over to Zoom.
I need my timer, sorry.
No worries. Thank you.
Chair, while we're waiting for uh the city clerk, um, I did confirm with the other departments, uh, the building official, fire marshal, they all wanna double check the plans one more time.
Okay.
And uh we brought up landscaping and there may be a, a call for some uh water concert, stormwater conservation, bioswale, that type of thing. But I'll get the city engineer engaged right away with you and his name is Doug Pike and we can work together on that, plus I know. Greenfield, right, okay, good. So you already have a relationship, that's great. Okay, thank you.
Perfect, no, thank you.
Okay.
So, um, Vanda Gieber, Five Donner Street, dear planning commis- commissioner, city staff and the community. I am unable to attend tonight's meeting, but felt it is important enough to send my written comments. Approved in twenty sixteen, the gas station project at the southeast corner of the Alameda and Highway one fifty six still has not been built. Almost eight years later, the project is back on the table. And I understand there is a proposal for a new concept vision and design that is more agrarian in nature and more authentic to San Juan Batista. Antoine Tax purchased a state of the late Patrick Beam, which included the project site. Tax operated a dairy raised um sheep, owned a meat market in town and partnered in the general merchandise business with the Abbey family. He was one of the town's first mayors as well as a director of the First National Bank of F San Juan. Naming this project the Tax Corner pays homage to a pioneer of our historic town. In addition, using an agrarian design concept rather, rather than a generic neo-Mediterranean design that can be found in any town USA is unique and maintains the history integrity of San Juan Batista. Please consider this design improvements. Which will hopefully drive travelers into town to learn more and help revitalize our local economy. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Got it.
Dear CEO of San Juan Batista Historic Resource Commission, Commission and Planning Commission. Traveling to San Juan Batista from one oh one on Highway one fifty six, a road passes through beautiful natural vistas and by the iconic much photographed Niling Barn, nestled in its rich lands. This approach prepares the visitors for a step back in time and sets the stage for an authentic historian experience in the city of San Juan Batista. The Tax Corner gas station should carry through this aesthetics. And as was so successfully accomplished years ago with the Windmill Market and Plaza. A rustic barn-like structure for the gas station is in an, is in appropriate and preferred architectural style for this gateway entry to our city. Also, a rustic architectural style for the gas station would establish a, a a compatible gateway to their surrounding natural environments, outdoor activities such as the Dianza Trail, Fremont Peak State Park and many other outdoor and camping opportunities, including the Wine Trail County and State Parks and the, and the east entrance to Pinnacle State Park. The rest deck barn design is appropriate architectural style for the tax quarter and the city of San Juan Batista. Thank you for considering my comments, please, and uh Carol Bonks, San Juan Batista.
Thank you. And um I think that no, no further email submissions, right?
All right, that was it, but we do have one hand raised via Zoom.
All right, let's move over to Zoom land.
Mr. Freeman, you have three minutes.
Okay, this is not Mr. Freeman, this is Ms. Boyd. I do wanna say this is a huge improvement. I am very happy to see this going forward and um with all the little details of making it very agrarian and historical. However, I do want to put some caution in about the lighting. We have a dark sky ordinance in, in place and also that is important to Pinnacles National Park as well as the Observatory on Fremont Peak. So lighting up is not a good alternative and be careful of any light fixtures that you're gonna put there that do not pollute the lighting up. Because or toward having lights go upwards, because it does um pollute the light for um the dark skies that um that Pinnacles National Park really wants to maintain, okay? So I'm just putting that warning forward, but other than that, I am very, very happy with this uh with this iteration and um look forward to seeing it soon.
Thank you. Any other comments?
See no hands raised, chair?
All right, then I think um we'll move on to the next um steps here. Um uh city manager, uh Dawn, what would be the next um action after this? So at our next planning commission meeting, would, would we be able to approve a design or do we still need to wait for landscaping signage and all that? Wonderful jazz.
They, they can come separate. We have a hearing open on the site and design review. Um, and the way the sign, especially the sign program is scheduled separate typically and kind of follows the project later. Um, but it would be nice to get some indication on the landscaping and the lighting uh with the site plan, as you suggested, council member degrees. Um, but uh that would be in January and just a reminder, January second is gonna be really hard to have a planning commission.
Oh, for sure.
So we might consider a special meeting later in the month if, if, if the applicant's ready.
That works. Yeah, I just wanna make sure that um I, I, I know the applicant's been waiting, I don't know how long, so I, I, I think we're going in the right direction um as we can see and so I, I wanna you know, kind of move forward with that.
Sure, one. My only thing is like, you know, you guys know, we have been, and as you know, the sad, it hasn't improved since twenty sixteen, right? We have been waiting for this. We'll definitely do what city wants us to do as far as lighting goes, landscaping goes, like, you know, me and Herman, we both are partners in this and then, you know, we, I left from Elbro coming here. So we, we thought we can get some kind of approval today and then, you know, as sign permit is separate, we can have that, you know, pass it around to all the members. And landscape will be whatever the city's ordinance is, like we, we have, like we have decrees the car wash, we eliminated that. So now we have more space, which we can easily, you know, take care of the landscape. I think that should not be an issue. So I was just seriously hoping if we can just, you know, rest is up to Dawn and how is the city manager, so what can we do about it?
The direction from the commission was to have a workshop and work with the applicant, which was my interpretation of tonight's meeting. We can come back as soon as we can work things out and get a quorum to take an action. But that's, that was this direction staff understood from the last meeting.
Yeah, no, this is, this is, this is appropriate. Yeah, no action today. I think for the next um meeting, you know, later in the month, maybe we can if, if everything's right, then we can have an action.
Absolutely, absolutely. We, we want, we're, we wanna make this go forward too.
Yes, I wanna, we wanna lock it in. All right, other than that, um, I, oh, sorry. Yes.
The uh, the biggest thing as far as from our end of it is, is if we have a building design that we know is gonna work, because we have to get it to a electrical engineer to make all the changes. So if we, we don't, we don't wanna have to go through that two more times as well. We're trying to condense what we have and at least know that that we have something that is, is possibly gonna work, so that we can move forward with the, 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 the other end of it.
Well, um, I'd like to respond to that. You now have heard as the designer and the owners. Every member of this commission say they don't just like the design, they love it. You've heard from uh two women associated with the Historical Society and very involved in this community that they love it. The council member's wife, uh, Ms. Boyd loves it. That's about as far as we can go tonight. If, if uh as Dr. Dollar suggested, you're looking for some kind of final approval on the design tonight, something that would be uh printed out and signed by somebody. We're not there, cause we don't have colors, materials, all this stuff that I mentioned, windows and doors. There'd be a whole lot more and, and we'll be a whole lot more involved before we get to that final approval stage. But as a concept, home run, walk off home run. It's terrific. The town loves it. And I think you you can be assured of that, cause the likelihood of people suddenly changing their mind and saying, no, make it look like a nineteen fifties diner, you know, there's not gonna be anything like that.
I was just wanting to clarify.
Right. Yeah, and, and we'll, we'll have, or, you know, staff reach out and, you know, hopefully we can get everything together and then for our next meeting, we can make an action on it. All right. All right, well, with that being said, I'm gonna move for an adjournment. Um, the next uh special planning commission meeting is scheduled for uh Tuesday, January ninth, twenty twenty four. It is seven oh six PM and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
So moved.